And we're ready whenever you are, ma'am.
Thank you, Cal. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, sovereign, just one.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Thule.
Here.
Councillor Selly.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Councillor Stevenson. Councillor Trim. Councillor Weaver.
Here.
Quorum present.
And I'd like the consensus of council to excuse Councillor Stevenson from the start of the meeting as she is delayed while traveling from out of town to come here.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. We have one presentation tonight from interim city manager Andrea Smith regarding the recreation department.
Good evening, mayor and council. For those that are attending remotely, this presentation has been included as a handoff. You should be able to and see what we all have here in front of us. And also, my colleague, Chamber Brown, the director of public works, is here. He can ordinarily ever go up to the podium, but I'll speak here, so if he has comments to add, he can join us from the podium. So, the recreation department is established in the charter under C forty-seven, which also establishes the recreation commission, the arts council, and the sort preservation commission. All of these were under the direction of the recreation director prior to 2020. The department oversees all of the city's parks, including their playgrounds, conducts the daily maintenance of those at the various facilities. Those include Kelly Park, which is also known as Hamilton Park, Row Street Park, New York Avenue Park, the Greenbelt, Monford Park, Dorf Park, and Maple City Trail. And they also respond to complaints as necessary. Under our current structure, the Department of Public Works provides the maintenance, including mowing, mowing, and general maintenance of all of the fields, including my Ashford Park, Haggan Bean Field, Park Street Park, which is across from the police station. With all of our parks that I've summed up, which are listed. In total, this exceeds fifty acres of maintenance that is presently being performed by the Department of Public Works. Just covered two slides in one here, but this next slide specifically references mowing. I do think in there, there are these are no longer maintaining library parks. But other than that, these are the parks that the Department of Public Works is maintaining to ensure that we have services for the area of clubs and youth and adult sports. So this includes not just our playgrounds, but fields like Father Martin Field, which is owned by St. Eric's Church and shared with the Octopus Boys and Girls Club that's maintained by the Department of Public Works, and other areas that are complementary to the Maple City Trail, including the Dugout and Chappal Park. In addition to the maintenance, the Parks Department and our seasonal staff maintain about thirty-six trackhands and meterkins on the daily in the summer season and in and throughout all of the city's parks in open seasons. It's listed there, so you can see where they are. In terms of facilities, the Parks Department includes the Dubisky Visitor Center, which is available for rent and has been rented out since the facility reopened following the COVID restrictions. We have rental rates as well as discounted rates for city residents. We currently accept applications throughout the year and the facility is open open year-round and staffed for rentals. The hours of operation do change seasonally and will open longer as we approach the official summer season. When it will be staffed by our seasonal employees, which are usually our teen employees and college students, provide the oversight of the facility in the summer. In addition to the Dubisky Center, we also have the Lockwood Arena, which provides ice as well as a seasonal venue. We can go as near as community events often used by the Chamber or City Festival and other groups for sort of indoor events. This year, the arena opened for ice on October eight. Prior to that, it takes about a week to prepare the facility for ice, and that is done by the Department of Public Works. The last day of ice this year so far was March eleventh. And we have, to date, exceeded just over $20,000 of revenue, which is almost fifty percent of the revenue budgeted for the year. And we do have October through December remaining to meet that revenue. This facility is also available for private use as well as used by Octopus Wine and Hockey and figure skating. And again, mirroring the Dubisky Center and other recreational amenities, we have a discounted resident rate and then a slightly higher rate for use by non-resident. The rates are included in the presentation. These rates have an increase from 2022, but we give review on annually for a range of projects. From October to March, we hosted nineteen public skating events, which are about two hours each. There were thirteen rock and skates, which are typically also two hours each. We hosted an open hockey in November, a skate with Santa in December, and we closed the season with the first paint the ice event in March. In addition to the Lockwood, the other winter programs that we hosted this year, we did bitty basketball, which we do in partnership with the Augsburg School System and the Bar City Basketball Team. Their staff and players run the program. The city promotes the program and collects and organizes the registrations. And then the school provides the gym at no cost, so the program is provided at no cost to the participants. And for the first time since 2019, we also offered Sunday family swim day also at the OFA pool. And this program was provided at no cost. In previous years, it was provided at a cost of $5, but that requires sending staff to collect money, so it's actually more affordable to offer it for a tribe, which we did this year, and it was very successful. So it was hosted for five weeks, the end of bitty basketball and leading up to the spring break. We are just coming into the summer youth camps that we offer each summer, and those start in July, just after the July Fourth holiday and run through August. We hope from the seasonal employees that are distributed between the recreation department and the public works department. These camps are designed to break even, so the admissions, the admission is designed to offset the actual cost, which has worked out well for the last two budget years. That's how they're budgeted, and that has worked out pretty well. So they are net zero impact on the budget and the taxpayer. So essentially, those participating are those that pay. The Municipal Marina is open from May through October. Again, our rates haven't changed since 2022. You have resident and non-resident rates. This year, we have thirty, sorry, twenty-four slips rented to non-residents and eighteen slips are, sorry, twenty-four slips have been rented in the power side. Five of those are non-residents, eighteen slips are rented for non-power. One of those is a non-resident, so most of the users of the marina are residents. But we do have a few non-residents, and we do have transient slips as well. We did increase the fee for gutskis this year. And other than that, the prices have remained the same. And the pool, we are tentatively set to open the pool June eighteenth. This is largely based on the weather that we need to have to finish the maintenance at the pool. Right now, that has been started. The season here doesn't until the end of June, I think June twenty-sixth. So the pool's a little bit later this year, which means getting lifeguards a little more difficult for early opening. But we do have some college-age lifeguards, and so we're working on settling that. And hopefully, we'll be able to open as early as June eighteenth. The pool runs until about mid-August, when we start to lose the summer, helping kids return back to school. The hours of operation are Sunday through, sorry, we're open Mondays through, Tuesdays through Sunday. We're closed on Mondays, but it's always been closed on Mondays for maintenance and cleaning from noon until six. Last year, the pool was offered for free due to donations that were received from multiple businesses and other area-wide organizations. But we did last year, and again this year, budget a revenue of $10,000 and did plan to charge a fee for the use of the pool. So that is kind of contingent on whether or not there are donations and whether or not it will be offered for free this year. In addition to public swim, we also do plan to provide swimming lessons, early bird swim, as well as pool parties. The baby pool is scheduled to be open. We were able to get in and Public Works was able to identify some of the leaks, and we have repaired them, and we feel confident that we will be able to open the baby pool, which I know has been a big concern for many young families. So we're excited to reopen that, and we're, based on the sort of start of the season, will be able to determine whether or not we'll be able to bring back the infant and toddler swim program, which has been offered in the past. Again, that's kind of based on lifeguard availability. And I think maybe what people are most interested in is talking in a little bit more detail about staffing and how the department is presently staffed versus how it was staffed maybe in the past. So, the very last slide of this presentation lays out two different scenarios. Scenario A utilizes the recreation director position. This is the position that we have had for the last two years. This was, so previously, this is a union employee who is able to go out and perform maintenance on the fields, mow grass, help with sports camps, really kind of the catch-all position. And that should be, in theory, supported by additional support in the Department of Public Works. It wasn't always. So, that position is the position that we have advertised for for the rest, starting in, starting in August of 2023, but have not been able to fill, although there seems to be some uptick in interest in that. So I'm hopeful that that might change in the very near future. That kind of comes at a cost of approximately $160,000 to the budget, the recreation director and an additional city maintenance worker, which will be in the Department of Public Works. Scenario B is kind of returning to a pre-2020 department. There really should be two of those to fulfill the work that needs to get done, and that's minimum staffing in both of these scenarios. So scenario B comes at a budgetary cost of approximately $250,000. So there's a net savings of the model that we have been using of about $90,000, which is approximately, for budget purposes, the cost of a police officer.
Also, recreation, it used to take care of, and now we do, is everything for the pride and beautification, all their hanging of the lights, banners, and watering all the baskets and stuff for the garden club. I dug back a little ways, which I did the presentation last year. Back in 2009, recreation had a total of five employees. DBW had a total of forty-three and a half. Now we're at thirty-three, and as of last year before the individual left, recreation was at one. When recreation got put over to DPW for, during COVID, we absorbed two of their employees, but we didn't gain any from retirements that year. So we've, we're still at even where we were before we took over the recreation duties.
Questions or comments from council?
I will start. First off, I believe that this charter amendment was poorly constructed. It's also, I believe, that it was vindictive in nature by the last council. What we have now is not working, nothing against Shane and his crew, but I firmly believe that this particular amendment needs to be repealed. We need a director of parks and recreation, whose office should be in a Dubisky Center. There is absolutely no reason that city staff cannot be shared. We have a staff person in Shane's department, which is doing his job now. It would not be difficult to move that over to parks and recreation or to share those employees. And I believe that we should be setting the standard for employment rather than St. Lawrence County Civil Service Commission, who has been unable to provide us with any candidates for that position. We deeply need to get somebody in charge of parks and recreation, and it does not belong under the DPW.
Yesterday. I agree, as I said in the email, it is needed to happen already. And then I just think people are asking for it. They want to see some staffing down there, not that Shane's men aren't doing a good job, but I think depending upon St. Lawrence County or anybody else for civil service, it isn't working, obviously. We don't have a rec director. I think under the scenario A, the last rec director left because the department was completely understaffed and they were overworked, overtaxed, just day in, day out, twenty-four sets. And, and that didn't work either. So, you know, I won't even comment on your first comments, not that I disagree.
I just want to say that this is incredibly important in all areas of the country and the broad range of stuff that you do.
Especially in light of the fact that they're running, you know, two down from a year ago, two years, oh, a year and a half ago, right? So you're basically, you're, you're already overwhelmed.
Or stretched.
More than likely, exactly. So, you know, I mean, and to everybody's points here, you know, I agree with the first part of your statement. I agree with the fact that we desperately need somebody in our recreation department. Just simply, just, you know, by the presentation, the amount that we have in the recreation department shouldn't be a burden on everything that the DPWs got going on. And with the staffing issue as the main crisis, but that's not, and, you know, I mean, we don't have a list because we don't have people applying. You don't have recruitment, and this is an issue that's being shared statewide. And, you know, I shared some information with council related to civil service and some of the contact that I've had with them. And, you know, I think probably sooner than later, as the mayor also countered on as well, to the fact that we might be seeing some relief as far as being able to hire through the civil service process, which quite frankly is a pain in the ass. You know, especially today, because the recruitment and retention for any title in any state entity, whether it be a county, municipality, or at the state level, is extremely difficult right now. I don't know, you know, COVID put a blanket over everything, and it's almost like a fire suppression blanket. It just put everything out, and before you know it, you don't have have people lining up to take these, these jobs, these civil service jobs, which are great jobs. And there's a share, and we're hoping sooner than later that civil service loosens up the binds or the confines of the one and three, whatever the case may be, with, you know, having a list of three, when in actuality, if you've got somebody to be able to apply for the job, get them in the job, get them through the testing process, or which will probably soon be an application process. I don't think you're going to see much testing in civil service anymore, at least, you know, at least from what I'm seeing. So with that being said, we've got, you know, and I mentioned it in the last meeting, here we are, late May, recreation department burdens on the DPW, the interim city manager and additional staff. And, you know, it's, I agree that we need to have it as soon as possible, and we need to continue to push our state elected to be able to try and get this civil service under wraps and get us some relief, and, you know, before everybody else starts getting it.
Yes, I mean, I think we have to take that initial step, and hopefully, as Andrea referenced, I'll say an uptick in interest with regards to current position. You know, for fortunate to get a good candidate and bring that person on board, you know, that at least is a starting point. And then to decide whether or not we can afford to get to scenario B.
Right.
Okay. And again, that's something we could turn over. And I know I talked about establishing a charter commission earlier this year, but I changed my mind on that, waiting for a new city manager to come in. So probably in the fall is when we'll appoint a charter commission. At that time, we can share thoughts about changes to the charter in different areas and see what that commission comes back with as recommendations to us. And again, we're not obligated to accept recommendations. We can make changes on our own to charter as a council, but I think it'll be important to hear a group of twelve citizens come back to us with their thoughts about any changes and revisions to the charter. A couple of questions with regards to the report itself. Summer youth camps, do we offer scholarships for families who, for children might not be able to afford? Or if there are multiple children in the household, might we offer a discounted price? Is that, if that hasn't been considered, can that be communicated to the rec commission to see what their thoughts might be on that? In other words, I'm thinking, you know, I'm looking, you know, it's possible for a child to attend four or more camps. And I'm thinking, you know, if Brad, you know, if they attend that many camps, might we give them a discount of $5 off each camp so they pay $100 for the season instead of $120? You know, something modest, that's not going to be a budget breaker with regard to breaking us off a break even or whatever. But I'm just curious, you know, is there other, is there support out there for families who might need it?
We do offer, in the past, there always have been donations for, that offset for scholarships. So we have offered scholarships on a request basis or based on a recommendation from a teacher or something of that nature. So scholarships have been available by request. And we did move away from the kind of bulk discount, if you will. Last year, with the first year, we just did $30 a camp. It just, just we kind of reduced the overall cost and just went to one cost. It just seemed like it was easier for all the administration of it. Some families have come in three weeks later and signed up a kid and are on paying this much. So it was just easier from an administrative perspective to have one rate for the camps, and that's how they've been budgeted this year. But we review the camps and their costs with the recreation commission handling.
And I know we had a recent meeting in the recreation commission. Again, our commission's trying to get back on board, you know, now that we're, I think, hopefully, over COVID. And a typical year, how often would the rec commission meet? Quarterly?
I think they were meeting monthly. If maybe not every month, but they were meeting fairly regularly up until we lost the recreation director.
Okay.
They helped plan some of the events that were going on. They would review camps and fees for the various seasons. So I think it might not have been a hard monthly meeting, but I think they were set up monthly. I believe they were set up monthly.
The marina, the slips that have been rented, is that full capacity for us?
We have more transient slips available this year than we did last year, which
But for non-transient slips, are we at full capacity?
No, we have more slips that are available because of people, we had a handful of people that did not renew.
Okay.
We went a very short waiting list, so we don't have anybody on our waiting list. Someone came in just last week and they rented a slip, so we still have some slips that are available. We make those available for training.
I have a question, if you could, on their likes on scholarships. Question for the pool. I know it was covered last 2023, it was free, because of donations. This year, it may also be right, an end of the season, but if not, is there a similar program? Like a scholarship program?
We don't necessarily have a formal scholarship for the pool. And like I said, last year, the city is not seeking donations. Those were just brought to us. We did not solicit any of them, and I am not soliciting them. So that just, it came, I think it was initially started by one of our unions and then some local businesses all of the same.
I hate the thought that four kids can't show up.
I don't think any child has been tonight, certainly not, for any program, right?
Not that I would worry.
Right. We find a way to make it happen. There is not a child in this town who gets tonight, so.
And Andrea, just so people understand, the reason you're not soliciting is we're not permitted to solicit donations, so it's not that we wouldn't want to, it's we're not able to.
It's great to be able to see that kitty pull up again as well.
I think they're pouring the concrete back around it tomorrow, and hopefully we can get it painted in the next week or so.
Good.
Be ready to open.
Any other questions or comments?
One last comment here. I'm looking at the salaries, and it's my personal opinion that $51,000 we're offering today is not a competitive salary based on the requirements listed by the St. Lawrence County Civil Service Commission. I think the salary listed under, that we paid before, or would list, we had our own department head, is much more realistic.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you, really stepping up again. There's so many hats that both of you wear and take care of our citizens, so thank you. We have one proclamation this evening. And at this time, I'd like to invite any friends of the Porte la Presentation Association to join me as I read the proclamation.
Coming right up back here.
I'm following directions.
There you go, Dan. You should grow like apple too.
Office of the Mayor, Augsburg, New York proclamation. Whereas the people of St. Lawrence County, and especially the people of the city of Augsburg, owe a debt of gratitude to Abbie Francois Piquet, accompanied by four indigenous people, twenty-five Frenchmen, including a stonemason, carpenter, laborers, and soldiers, who arrived on the west shore of the Osagachi River on May thirtieth, seventeen forty-nine, to found Porte la Presentation. And whereas on June first, Abbie Francois Piquet celebrated Mass on the future site of Notre Dame Church, officially establishing the French Mission. And whereas the small band firmly established a small the French Mission. And whereas the small band firmly established a small French community that embraced indigenous people from modern day central New York, Ontario, and Quebec, Canada, as members of the Catholic faith, and allies of the French monarchy in the St. Lawrence Valley. And whereas the community persevered and prospered on the frontier under the banners of France, Great Britain, and the United States through imperial wars, the revolution, and the United States' Second War for Independence in 1812. And whereas the first Euro-American mission and fortification evolved as a center for shipbuilding, a commercial port serving the mighty St. Lawrence River and Great Lakes, a railroad transportation hub and industry. And whereas the city of Augsburg's development as a vital and vibrant river community is a testament to the bravery, vision, faith, resilience, and persistence of all those people from across the old and new worlds who planted a flag here and founded our community. Now therefore, as mayor of the great city of Augsburg, I, Michael Thule, hereby proclaim each May 30th as Founder's Day in the city of Augsburg, in recognition of Abbe Piquet's significant contribution to the establishment of our beloved city and St. Lawrence County. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be fixed. All right, then I have to move these to the clerk to attest, and then we can bring the copy.
Make it official.
Um, now I have a mic. I'd like to, I'd like to invite everyone. Thanks, Storm. Everyone to the 275th anniversary of Piquet's landing on Saturday at 11 o'clock at Forte la Presentacion. The Abbe movie landing, 11 o'clock, and narrated by James Reagan, followed by a blessing from Bishop Terry LaValle. Then we will celebrate with cupcakes and ice cream courtesy of Bryce Chopper, followed by city historian Julie Badlin, talking about the founding of Forte la Presentacion. So please come and join us. It's free. Let's celebrate 275 years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your work during the year to try to help maintain and then we can afford it in the future.
Thank you.
We do not have any public hearings tonight, so that brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Loffler, 311 Paddock Street, Augsburg. As a newly appointed member of the recreation commission, I'd like to thank Andrea and Shane for the, the great report tonight. It's, it's, it's encouraging to see that you're starting to talk about a position. As a person that spent 19 years as your Parks and Recreation Director here, I would, my personal opinion is, I think you have to go back to the Parks and Recreation Director. It was a position that worked very, very well back then. We worked really well at the time with DPW, and I'm quite sure anybody standing there in that position would have Shane's support and the city manager's support to continue that type, type of operation. I think it'd be very, very important, the person that you hire has a good working relationship with the school district and the Augsburg Boys and Girls Club. There's a lot of programs and stuff that you can share with each other and help each organization minimize the cost. At the time, in the height of the summer, okay, we had over, at, at that time that I was there, we had over 60 part-time employees. Those employees that worked cutting grass in the parks and recreation, and people running all kinds of programs. I think, I think we have to, to look above and beyond the box. I think we need some new programs. And as a member of this commission, I'm quite sure that I'll be very vocal on that. And I, I think that we, we really and truly need a Parks and Recreation Director. It helps DPW, and it would definitely help your Parks and Recreation program. You know, at, at the time, there was a lot of grants out there. And I don't know if there's any grants left now to promote and, and upgrade your new playground facilities. As you go around this community, I think, I think we need some upgrades. But I, I, I really feel very strongly that when you talk, and, and I know the mayor has talked about the, the charter commission, and I, I think that needs to be changed. And we all know why, why that position was vacated. Okay? We all know that. And it was very important up till then, and I think it can be an important tool for this community to bring people in. And, you know, my last comment is, 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 I, I, it just gets to me when we have to charge for everything, for all kinds of facilities. I'll just tell you a quick story before I end. A good friend, Phil Cosmo, was the comptroller, and the recreation commission came out and said we had to charge, at the time, 25 cents for open skating at the dome. And Phil would say to me, your ticket thing is hunter kids. Okay? How come the revenue wasn't there? Because I said, when a kid come in with 25 cents, and he didn't have gloves on, I'd say, keep that quarter and go get a cup of hot chocolate. Okay? So I just, I'm just, I, I, it really concerns me about our fees. And I'll go back to what I've said many times, staying here. We all pay taxes here. I pay X amount of dollars for every department out of that tax thing. So I'm paying for that supervisor. I'm paying for that person that's cutting grass already. All right? So when it comes to activities, especially activities for kids, and, and, and I totally agree with that. I think a lot of kids are never turned away. But I think it deters some families for letting their kids do things because of the fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence tonight?
We do not.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have our consent agenda, that the claims as enumerated in general fund warrant number 10-2024 in the amount of $617,343, and library warrant number 10-2024 in the amount of $0, and capital fund warrant number 10-2024 in the amount of $70,238.48, and community development fund warrant number 10-2024 in the amount of $75.98, and community renewal fund warrant number 10-2024 in the amount of $0. As audited be, and the same hereby our order paid, I so move.
Second.
Kathy, please call the rule.
Mayor Thule.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Approved.
We have one appointment tonight. I will make a motion to reappoint Barbara Turan to a four-year term on the Arts Council, term to begin May 28, 2024, and then December 31st, 2028.
Second. Any discussion?
Kathy, please call the rule.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Thule.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Approved.
I answer council action. Our first item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a contract for weed removal services with comprehensive weed control of northern New York. Whereas the city received two quotes for weed removal within the Augsburg Municipal Marina, and whereas comprehensive weed control of northern New York has provided a quote of $3,850 to perform this once annual service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council authorizes the interim city manager to execute a contract for the necessary weed removal service with comprehensive weed control of northern New York for a cost not to exceed $3,850. Be it further resolved that funding for this service will come from fiscal year 2024, budget code A7110.491.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Andrea, am I correct in assuming this usually occurs in late July, early August after things warm up?
Mid-July.
Mid-July.
And yes, it is for that reason. That's about when we see sort of, in a typical year, kind of peak weed height. And so we do a once cutting and hope that we catch it at a good time where it makes it a little more manageable for the boaters for the duration of the season.
Seems to me we had a discussion under the last council about bringing in, I think it was corn, to get carp to come in and keep the bottom off, fluster it up so that the weeds couldn't take hold. Was that the discussion?
We did that. We started kind of late last year in the season, in an effort to, we had heard that, that might help. We talked about whether to also do that this year. Shane can probably speak a little bit more to that. It's fairly labor intensive. It's not a high dollar cost. And I don't know if we had a, we didn't do it for a whole season. So it's a little hard to say how effective it was, but-
Yeah, we did talk about it. Presently, the boat that we had last year wasn't quite seaworthy, with the kids in it. So I did talk to Kenny Ireland. We're just waiting for some summer staff. Kenny said we could probably borrow their boat to do it. Well, we're just waiting to get some younger kids down there to, to attempt to try it again.
It works, doesn't it? I mean, didn't, didn't we see some studies?
I think someone called in and said that it works for them in front of their camp.
Right.
So I think that's why we went off that recommendation to try it.
And we had another option for chemicals, but we're going to try this first, right? The other option was kind of expensive.
It requires permits and-
It was about $10,000, $12,000, I think.
Yeah.
Can I ask for clarification on what the program was? Did carp-
So it was, it was simply to take some, some whole cart of corn and spread it in the marina, maybe, I don't know, what, once a week or something, and keep the carp coming in. And what they do is they fluster up the bottom naturally, and it keeps the weeds from taking hold. So the weeds don't really grow up. And so it's a natural plan that's very cost effective. And I don't know, if we need a boater, somebody can just load it on the end of the dock with a bag of corn and chew it up.
Problem with that is if it accidentally ends up on people's boats.
Oh.
And it's not going to reach the middle too good either. For the bigger bulk of the issue is in the middle.
Okay.
I don't, yeah, we don't want to throw it up.
I mean, I didn't do it. So I don't know logistics, right? But, but yeah, it's, I'd like to see us try that for as inexpensive as it is. Maybe it'd be better if we tried something like that as well as this, well, earlier in the season. And maybe the weed guy can tell us if it made a difference or not.
Okay.
And you guys would be able to tell too, if it's cost effective. I mean, it, it's up to council, of course. I mean, I'm not-
Yeah, I can see it being cost effective, but I don't see the, you know, I think importantly, I mean, it gets pretty thick down there, as you're well aware.
It's a large area. It's not-
It's a large area. It gets pretty thick. And, you know, it also has the opportunity to bring and follow. That can, that can help with vegetation as well. But, you know, with, with, by providing corn, you know, but, you know, you also don't want, you don't, you don't want, you know, swamp full. You don't want, you want a marina full of ducks.
Yeah. You know?
Definitely a boater chute, right?
So-
Corn is, is nothing compared to what's up.
Not that Dan and I know anything about that. But, but at any rate, I, I think it'd be a good idea to, to, to involve, quite frankly. You know, in our, one of our recent updates, I saw, you know, that a, a, a great setup that, that looks very effective in, in removing weeds down there through that, through that vessel that, that was provided to us. I can't remember what it was called now, but, and I'm struggling finding it in my email, so.
What's that, a we do?
Yeah, we do. Yeah. So it, and, and that's, that's pretty impressive, you know? And if we got one local and we can get it for $3,800 bucks, make our boaters happy. Surely would.
All right, anyone else? Kathy, please call the rule.
Mayor Thule.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Approved.
And just for the record, I should have done this earlier. I'd like to reflect councillor Stevenson arrived about 6:15 tonight.
Thank you. Sorry for the flat tire.
Our next item of the business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution to apply for Water Infrastructure Improvement Act program funding for the reconstruction of East David Street. Whereas Environmental Facilities Corporation is now accepting applications for the next round of WIA and inter municipal grant funding. And whereas a municipality may apply for a WIA grant for more than one project, but each municipality is limited to receiving no more than $5 million allocation per year. And whereas the city of Augsburg applied for WIA funding in 2023 for the drinking water portion of the reconstruction of East David Street, but did not receive an allocation of funds. And whereas in accordance with the preliminary engineering report for the reconstruction of East David Street, the city seeks up to $2 million under the drinking water projects category of WIA to support the replacement of drinking water infrastructure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Augsburg City Council hereby authorizing the filing of a 2024 New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act to secure up to $2 million in funding to undertake and implement the reconstruction of East David Street as it pertains to drinking water infrastructure. Be it further resolved that the interim city manager is hereby authorized to submit the application and if funded, if awarded to administer the program, including execution of all necessary documents relating to the application or administration of the program.
I'll move that. Second.
Any discussion? Kathy, please call the rule.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Thule.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of the business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
Resolution to apply for WIA program funding for the rehabilitation of pump stations in accordance with consent order number R6-20170602-28B.
I'll move that. Second.
So this is the same application seeking up to $3 million for the rehabilitation of pump stations, which includes the South Water Pump Station and the Heavy Industrial Pump Station. These are the remaining items under our consent order from 2017, associated with the capital project at the wastewater treatment plant.
Andrea, I'd just like to point out to the citizens of Augsburg that not doing this could result in a penalty of $37,500 per day. So whatever we bond for, whatever we have to do is much cheaper than that scenario was ever going to be.
That's correct. We have 36 months, less than 36 months now, to complete that, those rehabilitation projects. And failure to do so can result in a penalty upwards of $36,500 per day, per violation.
Any other question or comment? Thanks for pointing that out, Storm. Kathy, please call the rule.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Thule.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of the business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a bond ordinance in the amount of $3 million for the reconstruction of pump stations in accordance with consent order number R620170602-28B.
I'll move that. Second.
This is the bond ordinance that is required to accompany the WIA application that we just approved submitting.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks for that explanation. Kathy, please call the rule.
Thanks for that explanation. Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Trim.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Tulley.
Yes.
Counselor Selly.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Brings us to all business. We'll begin with interim city manager Andrea Smith.
Uh, I'm going to ask Commissioner Angela Gray and our fire chief Ken Stahl to give an update at the request of council. Uh, specific to the budget amendment of January eighth. And, um, the budget for the Augdensberg Fire Department. So Angela, I think we're going to start with you. You're self muted. Sorry.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
The fire department originally started the twenty twenty-four year. Uh, with eighteen firefighters, budget is the N one N one. And so we did a raise to eight to add six. At that point in time, that increased the regular salary by two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And that is on the handout that was included with the agenda under the green bar. Um, when the roster gets up to twenty-four active firefighters. Um, the anticipated overtime that we have took a big reduction. And so we were looking to reduce overtime, assuming that all firefighters would be. Able to stay on shift, um, without injury, et cetera, by four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And so the impact of those new hires was that we eliminated hazard pay. Um, we reduced, uh, or covered the fifth man coverage through May thirty-first, um, beyond that date rather. And so that is a minimum manning clause in the collective bargaining agreement. The, it's important to know that the hazard pay clause and the five man staffing clause. Run separate, so they're not really related. You have to meet the manning clause at five, the hazard pay at six. So that's why having twenty-four firefighters on roster allows us to do six firefighters per shift. And then we also would have had the extra individuals on shift who cover vacations as well. So that's how we determined we would have about a four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar offset. In addition, there were other costs to bringing those firefighters onboard, uh, new equipment, training, et cetera. So we see an increase in salary, a reduction of overtime, and an increase of operating cost. But all for a net change in the fire department related to just the hiring of the firefighters of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And that was a reduction of overall department cost. We simultaneous to that, and we think this is where it gets a little bit confusing, is we had many other things wound into that January eighth. Amendment. And so those were summarized on this same sheet in very high level under the yellow section. Um, we had to do a change in health insurance because when the budget was passed. We didn't know what the true health insurance costs were going to be. That enrollment came after. And then we had an adjustment for retirement. In December, we accepted a COPSS grant, but the match was never budgeted. And then also there's the two seventeen that comes back into play for the hiring of the new firefighters. So overall, that entire, it was a very big amendment. Reduced the anticipated use of fund balance by three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And so the modified budget would call for a use of fund balance just shy of a half million dollars at four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So that's where we thought we would be on January eighth. Rolling forward throughout the year, we have had a series of firefighters that have been off due to unanticipated injury. Um, we do know that we were expecting two retirements. There as presented to you on April twenty-second. There was more retirements of firefighters that are eligible that could again change all these numbers. And so Ken and I and Andrea have met. And what we're seeing going back into the green section of this worksheet in the third column over is, um. Or I'm sorry, it's not on your sheet. It's not presented, but we would anticipate now that we don't have the full use of twenty-four firefighters. Addition, these amounts would be reduced in the last half of the year. That we anticipated savings, the savings is no longer there. And that's where we came to on the April twenty-second presentation that we are expecting, um. About three hundred thousand dollars of unbudgeted overtime cost.
And those. And those are related to, as Angela mentioned, the unanticipated injuries. Uh, or high and off the job, um, as well as some retirements that we didn't, didn't account for in our, in our summer budgeting. So, um, with that.
And we didn't account for them because we weren't aware of them. They, these are new events that have been coming our way.
Questions or comments?
I, I, just to, just to reiterate what Angela said and, and, and. I don't know if I'm blustered, if it's a curse, but I, I understand staffing and I understand the conundrum that both. You know, every department that we have is under. And in a perfect world, we wouldn't have this scenario as, as drastic as, as it is. And when you add the interior, the exterior costs of the six firefighters with the training and everything that else that comes with it. Is going to be the burden. And, and, and the perfect world, and we have six every day. You know, we, we'd be good with that, you know. I'm actually looking at a former chart sergeant here and, uh, and, and, you know, in corrections years ago. And, and that's, that's the big issue here, especially in civil service, you know. Not to boot that again, but, you know, ultimately, that's, that's where the burden lies. And, and a perfect world, when you have everybody coming into work. And you don't, you know, there are no injuries, there are no workers' compensation cases, there's no family leave or any of that case. We're, we're good, but that's not the perfect world. And, and with that. Is I saw this, I kind of saw this somewhat coming, I, I. Not to the extent that it is, you know, I knew that there would be an additional overtime cost just due to the staffing clause of the contract. But ultimately, I, I. I get it. Which I hate to say it.
But I also think that it's important to remember that if we hadn't hired the six firefighters. We'd be in a lot more trouble than we are right now. And we still are seeing some savings. It's just not the significance that we had anticipated. Is that correct?
That is correct. If we didn't have the, um, six firefighters which, um, actually graduate this Friday. Um, we would continue to pay the, um, additional, um, vacation and sick time overtime. They'll be on shift. Um, the first week of June, and they will immediately start saving overtime. Um, to put it in perspective, um. By the end of this month, by the end of this week, actually, we'll be at about three thousand hours of sick or workers' comp related, um, time use. Um, I did a five-year average. The five-year average was eighteen hundred hours with a low of eleven hundred and a high of twenty-nine hundred. Um, we are already a hundred hours over the highest amount of time we've had used, um, in the first five months of the year. Um, and prior to twenty twenty, um, a lot of that time didn't cause overtime because there was additional staff. So someone could be off sick and we didn't have to pay overtime. Currently, every time anybody is off, um, it causes overtime.
Yeah, and, and I'm going to echo Jennifer's comment, um. That, um, you know, this information that was shared with us in January by Andrea and Chief Stahl. You know, that demonstrated by hiring six, we could reduce the budget by two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the fire department. Was the rationale that this council unanimously supported that recommendation. You know, quite honestly, by perspective, it was a no-brainer. And the one thing I will make a comment about with regards to the, the current numbers and the impact on the. Use of fund balance in this year. Um, and, and I'm, I, I expect we'll get an updated fund balance projection with the June numbers. But what isn't reflected is the impact of other revenue and expects items on the fund balance. In other words, the state budget adds an additional twenty thousand dollars in municipal revenue, uh, to the city in, in this year. So that, that will help offset some of this increase in overtime. Um, the March numbers, uh, for interest and earnings showed that, you know, we're, we're likely going to have a good year and be above budget in that area. And then while I, 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 I understand from staff that, you know, expect the expense side of the budget to be, to be very tight. At the end of the day, I would anticipate that there's going to be some areas that are going to see their budgets underspent will benefit from that as well, so. Um. So it's not as, at least, uh, and, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's as dire situation. I don't, you know, I think barring something unexpected of significance. I think at the end of the day, we still might end up closer to using five hundred thousand dollars of fund balance this year versus eight hundred thousand. Is that, at least at this point, would that be a fair assessment, Angela?
At this point, I think that that is fair. Uh, we are certainly heavy on the interest over the budget. And again, to your point, the aim, additional revenue there, um, all offset that potential for an eight hundred thousand dollar use of fund balance. In addition to that, we have very heavily discussed here tonight as well. The six, what would probably be almost six months of some positions, namely the recreation position open. So we're not expending money for that salary or the anticipated health insurance and benefits. So I do see, um, there's a place to sort of absorb some of these unanticipated, uh, but I. Uh, it would be too early to pin that number down.
Yeah, I respect that. Thank you. Uh, but this, this, this report certainly helped clarify, at least from my perspective, the report that was presented to us back in April. Okay, gives us a, a, a better picture of, of how, you know, the updated numbers tied back to the. The numbers that we adjusted the budget by earlier this year. So I, I thank staff for this. Any other questions or comments on the fire department?
Chief, well, we got you up there. I want to echo your, uh, comments from the other night at the Elks Club. About the excellent job that your department has done during the past year, uh, given some trying, trying circumstances. And you'd mentioned to me that, uh, graduation for these firefighters is this Friday. Would you like to mention that?
So the, uh, six recruit firefighters will graduate this Friday at Jefferson Community College at three P M. And then they'll be, um, they'll be all ours after that.
So Chief, uh, congratulations to those, to those men and.
Women.
And, and woman, yes. Uh, it, any, uh, any site for a, another civil service test? Because we certainly see more retirements in, in the works.
So as I stated in April, um, it appears that I, we will not be eligible for an exam probably until January, which would look, we'd be looking at a. May to June hire date. Um, I have been looking into the possibility of provisional appointments. Um, with that, I have to make sure I was on, um, I spoke with, uh, Office of Fire Prevention on Friday for an hour. Um, about, um, what requirements they would have to have. So I just need to make sure that we do provisional, that we can actually utilize the personnel, um, to work. Um, it would not be my advice to hire someone provisionally and send them to a fire academy. So I'm hoping that we could have some sort of provision in the hiring, that they would be, they would already have some level of training that we would be able to utilize them. Um, I couldn't spend fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in hopes that they would pass an exam, so, um, I. I am looking at avenues. Um, I just need to make sure that it's going to work for the, for the department and for the city.
The county runs that, that firefighter's test?
That's correct.
They, they won't, they won't run it before January?
So the county has no control. Um, this police and fire, um, unless their promotional exams are controlled completely by the state. When I was down at a career chiefs meeting, I go every other month, last month, and there's three other departments that are in the same situation as us.
So the state just says, hey, yeah, we're not going to run a test?
Correct.
Yeah, isn't that nice? Thank you.
I've called everyone I could call and I haven't got anywhere, but, um, I'll take all the help I can get.
I, I've made calls myself. You know, the problem with civil service is they, they kind of operate upside. I mean, it, it's run by the governor's office, right? You know, but there's, there's quite a bit of bureaucracy to it, I guess you could call it. And, and, you know, some of the decision makers, um. I, I don't understand it. Um, uh, I've, I've got relations with people in, in civil service, um. They're reluctant to give a whole lot of information because quite frankly, I, I don't think one hand knows what the other's doing. And I, I'm, you know, and I, I don't mean that disrespectfully. I just, I think there's, there's a lot of, a lot of confusion and. And, uh, you know, hopefully we see some changes here soon, you know, in the process. You mean, you can't just open up any civil service job to an application. Police, fire are specialty jobs and, and they're, they're going to have to be tested. And, you know, there's certain parameters that they're going to have to, 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 to abide by, but other positions, not so much. And, and you're starting to see some of that, you know, I mean, Department of Corrections, Community Supervision opened up the application process four years ago. Much to my dismay as the president of the nice COVID at the time, but state police are not. You know, so everybody's starting to do it. And, but the problem is it's not reaching the municipalities and the counties. And, and therein lies the problem.
Any other questions or comments on the fire department budget?
Just to echo Storm's comments if I can, Mayor, uh, acknowledging, uh, fine work and, and the, the acknowledgement at the Elks Lodge. Uh, over the weekend along with fire department and our first responders and E M Ts and, and everybody, you know, great job. And recognize that, uh, we appreciate it.
Chief Kearns, don't feel left out. Uh, I'd like to recognize your, uh, staff also. I do as, uh, much as possible with your difficult circumstances.
Both of your departments have been through so much, uh, and, uh, I'd like to think I was right there with you, so. Fighting a good fight, but, uh, you know, and that's really a, a lot of why we're in this situation right now. Is, is what, what those departments have gone through. Sitting, sitting right here, yeah. Been through it all, so trying to fight. But, uh, and here we are now, just picking up the pieces and trying to, we're still going through a triage, really. Is, is this, this whole meeting has been about one thing after another, whether it's rec director that we still don't have or. Firemen and police and everything else. It's, th- this council right here has our work cut out for us. This, this is, this is triage. It's unfortunate. Thank you, Chief. Uh, next, uh, report on water billing.
Uh, at the April, the second meeting in April. Um, I think it was Mayor Tulley brought up water billing. Um, and since that time, I've met with Director of Public Works Shane Brown. We've reviewed our, um, municipal code, which is chapter two fifteen. Specifically, um, two fifteen, section thirty-eight with regard to how the city builds. For home occupations or mixed-use structures. Um, and so we do, if you do have a home occupation or a, um, a residential structure with, um. A mo- with multiple units, you do resume billing by the unit. We do understand that that's not always equitably, um, enforced. Because we don't always have good information, so we have talked about this internally. Um, we are going to, we believe that the charter doesn't need revision. That is the appropriate way to bill. Um, but we can probably do a better job of, of identifying home occupations. And mixed-use buildings, um, and making sure that they are built appropriately. So internally, we are going to mirror what we do with the residential. Um, residential rental inspection program, which, um, which we do. We have a residential inspection program where rental units are inspected by the code enforcement office, office. And, um, if you, there are certain instances, limited instances, that your unit is exempt from the inspection. Um, and in order to qualify for that exemption, you have to sign an affidavit stating that the unit, for example. Is rented to, um, maybe a family member, something of that nature. And if you do that, then you're not subject to the rental inspection. So we're going to mirror that with the water, um, in an effort to identify these home, home businesses, home occupations. Um, and so we will be sending notifications to businesses or suspected businesses. And notifying them of the change in billing. Um, and then if individual property owners claim that they do not have a business. They will be provided with an affidavit that they will be able to sign and have notarized, claiming and attesting to that they do not have said business. And that will go in the proper. have said business and that will go in the property file. And if there's a complaint, the complainant will be, have access to that through FOIL and they can pursue that, that recommendation for how to ensure that it's a bit more properly enforced. Um, and this has been provided to council in two different variations, sort of to outline the policy that we're going to propose in lieu of a change to the actual code, municipal code.
Any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions, if I may please. So what is the penalty if someone signs the affidavit and say they don't have a business, but they're found to have a business? What is, what is the penalty for that? I'm just, I might hear that from Andrea.
The form that we utilize for the residential inspection program does state, and I would be summarizing greatly, uh, so they don't have one in front of me, uh, but it does state that under penalty of perjury, while attesting that there is no business, um, in that residence. And if someone, some, the city and/or a neighbor or someone wanted to pursue that in a court of law, they would, they would have the ability to do that. And if you were lying or found to be lying, then you could be in violation of perjury.
So, okay, thank you. Second part of that is, um, so most people that have a home businesses, they have to have some type of licensure, like, you know, uh, real estate. I have to say where my business is, where the course of the business is. If I have branch offices, they have to be shown. Um, if someone has a license to do nails or hair or daycare or they file a DBA, do we track any of those? Or is that something that we would use to track some of these businesses?
So some of them are tracked, some of them are not tracked. So, um, our fire department also conducts inspections, um, of businesses and assemblies. And that would, some of those businesses that you mentioned fall within what the fire department conducts inspections of. And that will be part of how we go through the identification of, of who we would be informing of the new billing. Uh, so it will be a joint effort between code enforcement and the fire department, as well as public works, to identify and enforce our current code. We are not proposing any changes to the code, just better enforcement and, um, better enforcement of it.
So like any licensure through the department of state, the lists are right there to pull up and you can see exactly where.
Daycares are going to be an easy one to identify.
And then the DBA doing business has, are right at the county clerk's office. So those are some items that we would be using
Correct.
to help send letters out. Okay. Thank you very much.
So in case that these folks have to have separate water facilities or separate, is that what I'm reading here? That they, they have to have a separate water service in order to qualify for the competition?
So the way there, this is, I think you're just reading 215, right? Um, the way that this is right now, that you can have two services or you can have meter billing. I think Shane, you might want to speak to the details of this a little bit, if I'm not getting it wrong. I don't think we have any that use the meter billing approach. They just use the, the flat rate billing?
Yeah, I think it was, uh, the way it reads, it was up to the city engineer back then. So I think they could have told someone to put a second service into their residence, which really isn't a cost effective for people. So I think through the time they said, okay, we're going to charge you for two services, but you actually only have one to save them that cost of putting a service in, which is, you know, quite expensive nowadays. This is the way I look at it.
So to that, uh, service, that's not the point that you're making the decision to do this. Uh, and, and forgive me if I misunderstood, but, um, is this like a tax increase essentially for people who are?
They're going to, they're going to pay a second water sewer service bill.
Even if they don't have a second?
Even if they don't. So like,
Just for the business.
Yeah. And for like apartment buildings pay per unit. They don't have, you know, every unit doesn't have a service coming into the facility. They just pay per unit based on, I guess the recommendation would have been when this was started is they're going to consume more water. That's why they're charged for.
So if you just got like, you know, a guy or a person operating, let's, let's say they're a physical therapist or wants a physical therapist and they have, uh, they're running, uh, or something out of their home where they provide services, they kind of manage it online, they do online stuff, or they make home visits or whatever. Is that person going to be charged?
Yes. The, the way we're going to look for them, yes, they would be. And I think the reason behind that is if you have an elderly person that doesn't use as much water as a person next door that has a family of six, we don't charge differently. That way everybody's charged the same rate.
We don't pay, we don't pay on a metered basis. We pay one single family home pays a flat rate. So if you have a business in your home, you would pay two flat rates.
And even if it's just that person?
That is how our co-president, we read it. And based on the complaints and the requests of council, we review this. Don't believe that a change is in the city's best interest, but better enforcement of the way that the code is presently written and has been written for decades is really the best approach to take at this time.
I'm just trying to figure out how that person uses more water in their, their own home.
Well, some businesses use more water than others, but that's not how the code is presently written. It's not based on water usage. It's based on whether or not you have a business or you're just a single family home.
If they wanted to try to do it off of water usage, the whole city would have to be metered.
They're all metered.
Not just commercial, they have to be residential, which is probably a thing of the near future.
But, but most, most places have an option of doing the meter if they didn't want to do the two flat rates.
No, not, uh, not in this instance. This instance is clearly written, or they have to change the whole system to a meter. I think you'd have to, because then their home.
They'd have to have two.
They'd have, they'd have to have two services because their residential would have to be flat.
Okay.
But they would pay a minimum meter rate. So those, it would be a lot more costly for individuals if you chose to go that rate, especially for the businesses like you that are not water. They pay for a new water service and they pay a commercial new rate, which has a minimum flat rate, just like the residential rate, which is higher. So this is the most cost effective, but it's going to cover more people who have essentially home occupation. We don't differentiate between a hairdresser and an accountant or a hairdresser and a realtor. If you have a home occupation or a daycare, a business operating out of your home, you should be now paying two rates.
Any other?
Per the code, per today's code.
Per today's code with no change.
Exactly.
This is also part of folks who like work for, let's say, Verizon, they work out of their home, but they don't have necessarily enough license on businesses. They just are employed in a remote position.
But I suppose it would depend on whether or not they're an independent contractor or some sort, right?
Yeah, I think if they're employed by someone like Verizon, they work for Verizon.
They work for Verizon. So they're, they're not going to build, we're not going to build Verizon as a remote employee, but I see, I see what you're saying.
So just so I, I'm going to use my building and my occupation just as an example. So I live at 525 Green Street, single family home. If I choose to have a real estate office there, then I would only have the option of paying two, two flat rates. But because my business on Ford Street is two apartments and my business downstairs, I'm eligible to be metered. Is that correct?
Because you have a, a business.
The business. Okay.
So it's commercial, it's considered a commercial business.
So that's the difference. All right.
Because you're considered a commercial business then. Yeah. So like a normal apartment building pays per unit. Unless there is a business ran out of it.
I was just using that so I could get that squared away.
But if you were to move, like you said, your business to your home, then you pay the two rates.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah. And as Andrea pointed, I raised this question, um, because I was approached a few weeks ago by a couple of small business owners, uh, who were paying the dual fee. And they believe they're aware of other small businesses and residences that aren't necessarily paying a fee. And they're looking for equity in some manner, either, you know, change the fee structure or try to do a, a better job in making, uh, a, a fair assessment to all those who should be paying such a, such a fee. And so personally, I think the, uh, the recommendation by staff is a sound one. And, and I think this is the better way to go at this time. So thank you for your work on this. Any other old business to come before council? So I just, uh, not new, but I am confused. The rec director position, are we, we advertising right now to hire a rec director?
Well, there isn't, I mean, we didn't post it in the last like 30 days, but the position has not been filled. So there has been some recent inquiries. We did reach out to the local, to SUNY Canton. Uh, they have a enforcement program and obviously this is graduation season. So presumably there could be some students that were graduating and were interested in staying in the area. Um, so we're trying to sort of drum up some interest in the position, but we haven't officially reposted it.
Personally, I think we need to repost it myself. And I just wasn't sure where everybody stood here. I know I agreed with Storm, should be, I think, under the old system. Uh, and obviously the recommendation from gentlemen from the, uh, rec commission, but, uh, it's a lot of work. And, uh, I, I think we need the position filled, at least that position, somebody to manage that area, um, the marina and parks and everything that's going on. I think it's, it's, it's overtaxing the DPW. Could be doing other things, shared service. I don't know how anybody else feels, but I'd like to see the position posted ASAP myself. Well, me, you know, it would be the current position and not a proposal to go back to the structure 2020.
Plan B, not to go back to plan B.
Right. Not at this time.
And that's fine.
Baby step it.
That's fine. Yeah. That's, that's fine. With the goal of bringing back the rec department to the recommendation of hit, you know, having a full-time recreation director with a couple of underlings to assist in, and, and right, you know, plan B scenario, I guess.
Yeah. I'd like to move in that direction at least.
Well, yeah. Yeah. So would I. I mean, without question, um, you know, but, you know, we've got some inquiries. Let's, let's see how it plays out, you know, and, and, and see what we can do within the confines of our workability through the charter or, or the admin regs or, you know, whatever the case may be, to be able to get something up and, and slowly roll. Um, you know, we, we're not quite flush with cash yet. So, you know, with that being said, uh, you know, we've, you know, we've got a, we've got to, uh, you know, listen, we're digging out, we're doing, you know, I think we're, we're got a good thing here, you know? Some people may not agree that that's just the lay of the land, but I think we're doing, you know, all the right things right now. And, and slowly as we start to dig out, we can, you know, start to bring our, our departments back to where they belong, so that we're not dealing with overtime issues or staffing shortages or departments that don't have any employees. You know, that's the goal. And, and I, I agree a thousand percent. I'd, I'd love to see it yesterday. Uh, but, you know, let's, let's, uh, let's, let's see what we got in the hopper.
So you're supporting posting it?
And move, possibly move as, as quickly and legally as we can and, 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 and being able to provide.
I, I, I think ba- based on the contacts that have been made by, uh, by Andrea, um, with some possible candidates, um, I, I, I think let's continue to pursue that avenue and see if we are successful in finding a candidate in the near future. And then if not, then we can go back out and repost.
What's the downside of posting it like Dan's saying right now?
Could slow down the process that we, Andrea may have developing on her desk right now.
Yeah. So I mean, we posted it, I think, um, I don't think it's been reposted in the last 30 days, but it was posted. And we did re-canvas those around the list. They didn't only have two on the list, we did re-canvas them. There hasn't been interest. But after that, reached out to the college. Um, we've made some comments on our Facebook page. We've just done, done some other things rather than just the standard legal notice type of thing. So there's been a little bit of interest. So I, I'd like to see where that goes. Um, and then obviously we, we, I know it's probably been hard, but we start budgeting in July. So, um, if council's interested in looking at an alternative scenario, scenario A or scenario B, or some other scenario, um, conversations as early as July, um, on kind of what that might look like and the budgetary expenses. We've given you some high level thoughts on that, but kind of getting into the details of what that might look like will really begin in earnest in July, which is not that far.
So if someone had interest, because I had someone reach out to me over the weekend, they should contact you?
Yeah. I would be able to reach out, uh, complete the civil service application. You still have to go through the formal process, but absolutely. I mean, if the position we would like to sell immediately.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Any other old business? Brings us to new business. Anyone have a new business for council today?
I have one item.
Please, please, council.
Um, so we've had some significant rainfall the last, uh, number of days here. And with the construction on Green Street, um, the way that the orange barrels are over the top of the storm drops, the water is just rushing right past them and going to the low areas. Now, I'm not saying this because I am one of the low areas, because I am more than happy to go out with my rake and clean the storm drains off. And I've done that over the weekend. But I did have two people contact me over the weekend that they're not physically capable of doing this and their storm drains are covered with leaf and debris from tree droppings and everything else. And they're just not physically able to do this. What is their recourse if the street is flooding, which then floods their basements?
If it's during working hours, they can call us. We'll get right over there and clean them. We try to, if we're at work and there's a heavy rain, we try to go out and hit the low areas. If it's on the weekend, just like this week, and someone called in, they called the PD or the on-call dispatcher, and then they call our on-call people in. But like this weekend, they called, the time we got there, it made its way underneath the barrels.
They actually went out and cleaned it.
Okay. So.
Yeah. Okay. They called their son and actually went out and cleaned.
So they call the PD, they'll, they'll call our guys in.
Okay.
If there's an issue, like it's, we, if we don't put the barrels there, underneath the barrels, on most of them, there's three quarter inch plywood that covers the hole with some way to get around it, case of traffic. And in the areas where there isn't the barrels, we have steel plates to stop the structure. So it's going to be that way probably to mid-July to, to pave.
Is there any better way to let the water go down? I, it's, it's really.
If we don't put the barrels out of, the, the thing is, is cars will just go over them. And the next thing you know, we're buying tires, front ends and stuff like that.
It's a sore subject tonight, Shane.
Yes.
No, just because I had.
No, it is, it, it does become an issue. And we've tried, we just started moving to some of this, the steel plate structure because on Moore Street last year, we probably lost 15 barrels. People just drive through and just run them over.
So there isn't any way to let the water go down the storm drains right now?
Ike, we can go back and look at them. Maybe we can drill some holes into the, the rubber rings.
At least just in some of the troubled areas?
The low areas. Yep.
The low areas and the areas leading to those low areas, because it's just like a river.
Yeah. And we got a lot of rain and a quick hurry over the weekend.
Yes, we did.
So I, it was driving around and I noticed other areas, like you're saying, just having a hard time keeping up.
Like I say, I'm used to doing it. I do it just as a matter of recourse. And I show people all the time, this is why you don't put debris in the road, because it all goes downhill with the water. And it ends up blocking everything up from here to the wastewater treatment plant. But like, some people aren't physically able to do it. They're just very concerned that if they can't reach somebody, that their basements are going to flood.
Yeah. And if they call our, if they call the DPW, I'm ready. We'll tell them to call the police station.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll get with Joe and we'll pick out the troubled areas and we'll try that, drill holes in the rubber rings and stuff, see if it helps.
I, I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Shane, out of curiosity, is the wastewater treatment plant been handling the large amounts of rain we've had the last few days?
I didn't talk to Christian about it today, but I know they were keeping an eye on it over the weekend. I don't know, I don't think we went over, but I'm not sure. Like, he didn't tell me we didn't, usually he does.
Must have been close.
Most likely, yes. Main Street being on board again might help us a little bit up and running. It was when they had the bypass pumping there, the bypass pumping actually was pushing, wasn't allowing it to go to the river. It was actually forcing it to the plant. It was overkeeping up, which is good, but bad on the other hand.
Thank you. Any other new business? That brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have any items for discussion to see? I, I do have a few. I asked Andrea to look into the following situation. Is a homeowner responsible for removal of yard waste left on their property by another person after the yard waste collection ending? I was approached today by a homeowner who experienced this recently, yard debris left in her backyard, which is adjacent to a lane. yard debris left in her backyard, which is adjacent to a lane. Unknown whether or not this was a deliberate act, but the homeowner was concerned about being fined if she just not removed the debris. And Andrew's informed me, she'll review the situation. Will staff review the history of how the city's treated such situations in the past? And will provide a protocol for citizens to use. Is that fair? Okay. Next, I was informed today by a resident living across from the former Augsberry Tank Farm that debris likely in the form of dust is blowing from the dirt piles from that property onto neighboring properties. Apparently, the dirt piles were covered with some material prevent this, but the coverings are becoming torn and are blowing across the street with the dust. So I've asked Andrea to reach out to DEC to inform them of the situation and see if they can do something to remedy it.
Which I have done.
Thank you. Next, now that the Arts Council has reappointed members, I will contact them to see if a meeting can be scheduled in the near future. I will make the arrangements for this meeting, and will attend to learn from them if they would like a city liaison until such time as a rec director can fill this role, or if they would like to meet without such a liaison. The Arts Council might become a more important body for our citizens in light of the announcement today that Augsburg Command Performances is ceasing operations after its last scheduled performance on October fifteenth. And then speaking about OCP, it was with great sadness that I learned earlier today of the decision of OCP's Board of Trustees to end the organization's sixty-two-year run of bringing quality professional theater to Augsburg, to North Country and Southern Ontario. I'm sure it was a very difficult decision to make, but the rationale stated by OCP Administrator Sally Palau in making the announcement seems responsible to me. On behalf of the City of Augsburg, I express our appreciation for the great leadership Mrs. Palau displayed as OCP Administrator for more than thirty years, and great thanks to the many, many OCP volunteers who helped make high-quality live theater possible in Augsburg for sixty-two years. That brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, and you will have two minutes. If anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have two minutes.
The first individual is registered as Greg McAmara, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open, sir.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I just wanted to call in and talk to you about some of the discussions you've had about the water and charging apartments and landlords and business owners and stuff of that such. I would like for you to look, to look at it this way, okay? If I have been, if I had an apartment house, which I don't, and it had four, six, ten units in it versus a regular residential house with just one family, the water entrances here in the city, most of them are three-quarter, and some older commercial properties had an inch and a quarter service coming in. There's about fifty-five PSI coming in from the pressure here in, in the city, somewhere around there. Now, it doesn't matter if I got or had four or six people running a shower at once, or their sink and their kitchen, their toilets, anything that uses water. There is still no water, no more water going into that building than if it was a single-family residence, because all that would happen is the water pressure would drop if multiple people were using water in different units in one building with one single service. Now, I also would like you to think about, let's say, for instance, it was a four- or six-unit place with one person in each unit. Then you got a house with that many people living in it. So the landlord now has to pay five times more than the person who owns the house. It sounds to me like, and especially with this dump fee you guys all voted for, with no way of determining who and who isn't a contractor and stuff like that, you guys are dying to get any kind of extra revenue for the city in any way you can, which I understand that, because the city has no money. But the, the, some of the stuff you're talking about, I don't see, like, if I was a landlord, I would get a group of other landlords together, if you decide to go forward with this, and start a class action lawsuit because of what I just told you. And it's, it ain't right. If there's a girl or a woman or a man, whoever, that has a little hairdressing business in their house, and they're running a sink a little bit here and there, for you guys to try to charge them two services, in my opinion, is crazy. And I don't think Mrs. Stevenson should be paying two services either, because there are no meters in this city, nothing's been metered. And I could turn my garden hose on and let it run all day long if I want to at my house, and it's the same price, it's one service. Not that I do that, not that I think people should do that, we would have no water. But you's gotta look at it like that. That's, what you're doing does not seem to me fair or legal if you's look into that. And another thing I wanted to talk about was the.
Greg, you need to wrap up, your two minutes has expired.
Okay, I'll be quick. The, the dirt piles that you were talking about with dirt blowing over from the former Augsberry Tank Farm, sir, they're full of PCBs, which is some of the most dangerous oil known to mankind, and it's why those piles are there, is because they couldn't finish the cleanup, because it costs too much money. And so I'm glad you brought that up, too. And I would like for that property to not be referred to as the former Augsberry Tank Farm. This property down here behind my house was Diamond National, and it was Shade Roller. So it would be the former Shade Roller property, not the Augsberry Tank Farm, or the former Diamond National property. I would, I would appreciate it in the future that they would be referred to as what they formerly were rather than way back in the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
We do not have a need for executive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.